All the meeting to order now at 7:42. Got a little bit of a late start due to our unique location for tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody, especially library staff for accommodating this strangeness for tonight. So we'll call the meeting to order. And as always, pledge allegiance. We don't really have a flag. I guess it's like in there. So we say it's in that direction. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. The attendance is going around. Do we have an attendance sheet?
Jill, do you have a attendance sheet? Attendance sheet?
Oh, wait. We don't have an attendance sheet. We don't have that.
Yeah.
Wait, we have this one. So far, everyone's here except for Riannon, but Riannon will pop in.
Oh, she will come.
She's gonna come from the budget vote, yes. So that is, that's gonna come. We will, we will try to time it appropriately. And we have, we have quorum anyway. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Let's get started with approval of minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look? Yep. I had no comments on this. Does everyone feel comfortable voting on the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from February? Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Thank you, everybody. Here, attendance sheet. Great, we will start with our ULS report.
Okay, yeah, everybody. I have really nothing to add to what I already reported in my last meeting. If you look at the minutes, very little to add. And besides, I, I would have to come for about a month checking the state of my roots. So I did not sort of keep abreast with what was going on. But when I decided I checked, there was nothing to write home about at this time.
Thank you.
So I will put more comprehension next.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't know if you know off the top of your head, Francis, do you have any idea when the next trustee
I do.
Oh.
What club is while we're talking?
Is it April? Nope, it is April 18th.
April 18th, yes.
And it's board director relationship.
Board director relationship.
From 5:00 to 6:30. I can, I'll send that out to you folks again.
I, you know what? You do it all the time, Tom, and I forget. And so I think I even have it in my calendar, but I just wanted it to be repeated here for everybody, everybody's benefit. Moving on to president's report. Tonight is our budget vote. We will get to that. Beyond that, I don't have much to say for this moment. I'm sure I will. Pass it on to Tom, the director's report.
Thank you, Whitney. At last, I'm happy to report the projects that we've been talking about for over a year are underway. And that is the construction grants that relate to the renovation of the library third floor. It is actually in play as we speak. Carpet is being replaced. Much of the floor has been covered with new carpet. We're gonna continue to carpet. And it will probably end on April 6th. And we're trying to do it on a piece-meal basis. Our guys are doing an amazing job. Our custodians just has to be noted publicly. They just really keep up with all of our many projects. And we're lucky that Rob Flora, who's our lead custodian, was a contractor in a previous existence. And he functions as our GC here now. And so he's been really helping us move forward. So third floor carpet will be done by early April. We will also begin the process of having the glass enclosures created. It will allow us to establish new study rooms and contents rooms as well. Looking towards having the paint done. We're waiting on furniture, which is, which is a really big deal. Some low voltage work will be, will happen. Some electrical work will happen. I'm hoping, so much of this is contingent on when furniture arrives. That's really been, in the most recent past, something of a speed bump, you know, slowing us down because of that. But I'm told that furniture for the vendors that we're working with, things are starting to move in a fine, timely fashion, not stuck in the pipeline. So very excited about this project. And I'll keep you abreast as we go forward. The second half of that, that year's grant is the replacement of air conditioning units at the Huguenot Children's Library. All three units have been ordered. We're now just waiting for delivery and installation. That will go quick, will not create any inconvenience. Our fire stopping and safety project, we're on the cusp of signing the contract, which was approved by the board and also scrutinized by our attorney, who made some changes. So we'll be signing that in the very near future. And I hope that our next meeting to have a timetable to share with you folks about that work. Continuing with the state grants, which we've got a lot of them. This week was an important week because one of our grants was approved by Shippel, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. And it related to the Huguenot Children's Library. That got stuck in the pipeline, but we had a series of fruitful conversations. They approved our grant, and so it's gone back to the state library and the dormitory authority. And again, the timetable to expect an announcement, we hope, is June of this year. And the grant monies, we're hoping, again, will arrive possibly in September, maybe October. They arrived late this year.
How much is that one?
Let's see. The, the noise abatement project, we received a total grant award of $175,591. The required library match of $57,424 will be provided by the foundation. As far as the Huguenot Children's Library grant, it was a total project cost of $48,760. And the grant award split it in half, where the state is giving us $24,380, and we have to make that match. And again, the foundation will be providing that match amount for us. Noise abatement project, not all sections of the library, but predominant sections, will be, will be, you have seen noise abatement solutions, baffles and other things, which will help us make the library a far more quiet place than originally. When it's busy, which is great, it's also distracting for a lot of people. And so we're hoping this project will help. At the Huguenot Children's Library, it's a, it's a real kind of cornucopia of things. A lot of it has to do with storage that really needs to be addressed on all three levels of the children's library. Replacing the flooring in the lower level because, because there had been a flood not so long ago. Redoing some things that relate to the kitchen. So we're hoping that will all move forward. Our Yiddish book discussion grant, Pena Just Michael received training at the Yiddish Book Center in Amherst, Massachusetts. And we've had a series of meetings, most recently last Tuesday. And we're hoping that we'll have something to announce and share with the community within the next few months. And the theme again is stories of exile. And there's a number of books that have, that have been written in Yiddish but translated in English. But what we're planning to do is to expand it and to have books or excerpts that relate to the African-American experience and the Mexican experience. And what we're hoping to do when we create this program is not only ask people to come and talk about what they've read, but also tell their stories of displacement and exile. Because we think, you know, there are many stories out there that would be very illuminating. So that's, so that's moving forward. I just want to remind people that, once again, New Rochelle Public Library, along with the four other Sound Shore libraries, are collaborating on a five-time-one book. And this, this year, we are focusing on the, your really extraordinary author, Lorraine Hansberry, who we all know was the writer of The Raisin in the Sun, but she wrote many more plays and are actually on Broadway right now. And there's been a series of programs that started, started on February 11th. And the last program will be here at our library, in our theater, on April 15th at 3:00 p.m. And I'll, I'll share this with you folks because I think it's interesting. It'll be here in our theater from 3:00 to 5:00 on the 15th, which is a Sunday. And the, the, the topic is looking at the work of Lorraine Hansberry through a theatrical exploration of redlining. And so, so the idea is that there will be a moderated discussion with a theater director and a redlining expert. And there will also be excerpts read from The Raisin in the Sun, which will include actors. And I also believe some of our paid students as well. So it'll be a really nice kind of connection between the professional and our very talented young people. So that is that. And let me share this with you folks, learn a little bit more about it. We talked about the trustee handbook. April 18th is the next one, board director relationship. The AARP tax aid program is back. We're seeing a very popular response. Frankly, it's a little less popular than pre-pandemic. We're seeing maybe about 250 people a month, which is really good. Prior to that, we saw just an additional 100 people. And so we'll wait and see if, you know, people have found alternatives to our program prior to that.
Have a question on that.
Yep.
Yeah, of course.
How can individuals register? Or is there an appointment? Is it walk-in?
Good question. Yeah. Daniel, when the pandemic started, there was no more walk-in, which was really popular. There was a registration and appointments. Now we're really back to where we were prior to the pandemic. I'm sorry. And so with, with that in mind, all you need to do is come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It opens at 9:00 and goes to 2:00. There is a list that you have to sign because it's a first come, first served. And it's, you know, these volunteers are pretty amazing. They're here long past 2:00, oftentimes here at 4:00. And of course, they're helping people with all of their tax documentation. And they're also submitting an electronic return to us well. So that's that. Before I get into the friends and foundation request, I'd like to talk to you about two topics that I've shared with you.
Well, I have both five minutes. I'll be sure I get those. I want you to, you know, you told me so.
Sorry. I had sent along with the minutes a request for the board's consideration. That is the renovation of the adult services office. The adult services libraries are quartered on the second floor in a fairly sizable room in the corner of the building. And when I tell you it has not been touched since it opened in 1979, I'm being completely honest. It's not in great shape. There are a lot of issues that exist. But our process over the number of years has been to, to upgrade staff offices and quarters just because staff need a decent working environment. And we worked with, the vendor that we had worked with regarding community relations and children's staff offices, he's a vendor that worked at the Westchester Library System, has a New York State contract that is very, not only putting forth its own furniture, but helps work with the staff to come up with a design that really fit their needs. And so with that, we've worked with this gentleman, the company that it represents. And we also, as part of this, had to change things, like we had to paint the office. We needed to change the flooring. We needed to do some electrical work to take advantage of the computers that we really haven't had up there since, since, since the beginning of the opening of the building. And also tied to that, we needed to engage the services of a vendor to do low voltage. So with that, I sent you a budget of $64,154.69. With that sum, that will allow us to remake that office into a far more attractive, a professional place for our staff. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Lucia had a good one earlier in the, in the day.
Do you want me to start with that question?
Sure.
Okay. That was, thank you, Tom. It was just the timeframe for the renovation project.
And how I responded to Lucia via email was that, in our estimation, we would imagine it would take approximately a five-month time period from ordering the furniture, which is really the slowest element, to completing the work. So essentially, when the furniture arrives, which we think will arrive in about three months to four months, we will, once we have a delivery date, we will start the process of, A, vacating the office and putting our staff in temporary spaces here in the building. We'll then change the flooring, we'll change, we'll paint, we'll do some low voltage work. And then the furniture will be installed, the electrician will be in. And once all of that is done, then the staff can return to more efficient quarters. And that's a rough estimate, but I think based on what we've seen previously, barring another pandemic with a slowdown of items, that's what we can expect.
So it sounds like Q4.
Yeah.
My fourth quarter.
Yep. Yep, we're hoping so. Yep. Because after, if, if we do get the approval tonight, we'll sign off on the documents and send, send off to the furniture vendor tomorrow.
Great. Anything else in your updates, Tom?
I need a vote in favor.
Oh, sorry. I need a vote in favor of the 64. Can you just say that amount again?
Yes, it's $64,154.69.
Okay. And this is coming out of our?
Our capital, our capital fund.
Budget allocation.
Right.
Does anyone have any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the request for $64,000? $64,154.69 for the renovation of the, what are you calling it?
The adult services office.
Adult Services Office.
I move for the renovation of the adult services office.
Thank you, Lucia. Can I get a second?
I'll second the renovation of the adult services office.
Excellent. Are all in favor of the renovation of the adult services office? Okay, any opposed? No, any abstentions? No, good.
Thank you.
Get it.
One more, one more financial request. And this was literally the 11th hour, and I apologize. I sent you folks, you may or may not have seen it, an email this afternoon. And it really relates to a series of grants that we previously received. And it is the e-grant program through the federal government. And Daniel O'Gerry, who's really done a fantastic job in this area, writing these complicated grants and dealing even more with the complicated retake that the federal government has while around these grants. We, some years ago, received approval for a five-year e-rate grant. And we get, we, we have the allocation set and given to us. But for each year of the grant, we have to apply. And the first two years, we did, and, you know, we were successful. We received X amount of dollars and a, and a, and a grant amount. And the formula, we're lucky enough, for the total project, the federal government is giving us 80%, and we have to furnish the remaining 20%. So Daniel has been, there's no other way to say it other than he has been pestering. He's been reaching out to our vendor that we work with, and there's been no response, no response. And finally, Daniel did get a response on Tuesday, in which the, the whole grant was laid out and how much, how much we're getting as opposed to what the federal government will provide us. And in my email, I, I indicated that there will be, we will receive from the federal government for this year, a total of $60,081.49, which is 80% of the total project cost, which is $75,101.86. With that in mind, the, the scenario is that the, the libraries or the other organizations, school districts, what have you, that participate, need to come up with a match. Our match, 80% of the $75,000 amount, less, you know, with the 20% remaining, is $19,386.2. And that, that, that amount of money would be taken from our fund balance. But what it would mean is, by receiving this money, just to give you the specifics, I won't go into too much detail, but we'll be receiving a lot of financial support relative to basic maintenance, licenses, broadband services, internal connections that relate to switches, and also internal connections that relate to UPS units. And so what I'm asking tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm, I'm asking for a vote that would allow the library to meet the match and provide $19,386 towards this project. And we will, in turn, receive $60,081.49.
Does everybody understand this e-rate? We've talked about it before. It comes up every year. It's beneficial for us, but it's confusing, and it happens very quickly like this. And I'm just gonna read the last two, three sentences of Tom's email. The matching amount will be taken from our fund balance. That's the $19,386. Happy to respond to questions via email or at tonight's meeting. That's where we are now. Please note, we will lose the e-rate grant if the board does not take positive action tonight. So why is that? Because there's a timeframe?
There's a timeframe.
To say yes or no?
Right. And the vendor that we work with sent us this information after you, right? And Daniel reacted, and I'm reacting.
And like, what's the timeframe to say yes or no?
Today.
Today.
Essentially today.
Like, here it is, and they expect we'll just turn around and say yes or no.
So I have a question in regards to the vendor, not, not this process. I understand that it's important, we have to make a decision. But procurement process, I mean, why do we use this vendor? How, how do we come about with this vendor? And why is this process taking so long on the vendor side, which then affects us to make this decision in a very hasty manner?
Good question.
And is there, is that the only vendor that does this?
Well, actually, for us, it's a good question. We did not, when we received the five-year grant approval, we have to put out our package for vendors who are qualified by the federal government to apply. And we did not have. I think this might have been the only vendor that, that applied.
Makes sense.
Yes. And so therefore, when, when you're the, Daniel, you know, when you're the only game in town.
So we're, so we're in a five-year.
And we're right in the middle right now.
We got the conditional okay, but we have to do this each year.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, this is the only vendor. We have to work with this vendor to give us the result, but we have to vote on it. So I just wanted to be clear that.
And I will say that, Daniel, even though the, the, the delay in sending all this to our collective attention is poor, he, he is happy with how he works with it. That's, I mean, the bottom line, but still, coming to you, you know, with virtually no no's, is not, is not ideal.
I mean, it's not a reverse rodeo, thankfully, so it's not like we've never heard this before. It's just, I think, I would request, and let me know if anyone agrees or disagrees, that if this happens the same time every year, we kind of can have reminders to remind, remind ourselves that when the time comes, like, it might happen like this, everyone's prepared, and we can say, yes, we know that we have whatever money we'll be asked to match in our, in our fund balance, et cetera, just so that we're not, you know, feeling constrained if anyone feels that way.
Is this the time of year where that typically happens? So it's often in March?
March. Not too, not too.
So it's, it's generally in the end of the? Wishing for summer already. So it's the end of quarter one, essentially. At the end of quarter one, we, we expect to get this.
Yeah. So let's put it in our, like, 20, January 2024 calendars to remind ourselves, you know, at, at that board meeting, right? Just like, make note of the e-rates coming up, and Daniel's gonna have to, you know, I think we will always want to look at it before voting, but, but at least we'll be prepared, you know, just having to re-familiarize ourselves with that 10 months from now.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Can I make a motion to approve the use of the fund balance money in the amount of $19,386.2 so that we can secure this e-rate grant in the amount of $60,081.49? Motion, anyone? I will make the motion, can I get a second?
A second?
Great. On favor?
Aye.
Any, any abstention? I mean, any projections? What is it?
May.
Oh, thank you, oppositions? Oh, my God. I'm in June also. Any questions? Great. Okay. So, so tell Daniel thank you for his work on this. And great, motion passes, and now we're in.
Two more, two more brief items.
Yep.
Friends in New Rochelle Public Library continue to work extremely hard. They provide the community with open hours on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Donations are still being accepted in limited sizes, two small boxes or bags. I should say that the friends continue to make donated books available to organizations throughout the county and elsewhere. And next week, I believe we will be seeing people that connected with, with the Westchester County Jail coming back to start taking more things to share with people who are incarcerated. So they're really very civic-minded. And so it's great. Their next board meeting will be on April 11th at 1:00 p.m. Will be here in the library. Next and final, our foundation, really an amazing group, who continues to work and support our library as we move forward with our, our grant obligations, you've heard about that, and other wish list projects that we provide over the course of year to year. The Game On Foundation, March 10 fundraiser, was really a huge success. It saw over 200 people here in the building, playing mini golf, but also having a chance to chat and mingle. You know, there was great food and great beverage here. There are other games that were available in the building. And really, one of the best aspects of this fundraiser, other than the coming together and the funds raised, is that there were plenty of people who really had not seen the library in its current iteration, and were really very impressed with all the changes that we've made. And any, any event that brings people into the library and opens their eyes is a good event. The second half of that event, which was not fundraiser-related exactly, was that we kept the, the 18 halls available on all three floors for the community on that Saturday from 10:00 to 3:30. And I was working, passing out golf clubs and balls. There was over 500 people here, and it was great. And families had an opportunity to come and golf and just, you know, hang out together and chat, and again, see the library. So that was, that was, that was wonderful. And the next foundation board meeting is, is May. This date, I just lost this. Share with you later. And it will be here in the library. And what we'll be doing is providing them with our, our sort of grant requests for next year. I'll be sharing it with the board. But I can tell you, the, the first two items are the match amounts that we talked about for the noise abatement project and for the Huguenot Children's Library renovation project. The second, or third request will be our very popular museum pass program that we've been, that we all know is, is a big success in the community. And I believe the next project will be continuing the efforts to upgrade and renovate the children's side of this, of this library. In particular, behind the children's desk, it's very disorganized. It's not, it doesn't have great storage. It just, it doesn't work very well. So we've worked with a contractor, and we've gotten a price. And so we're asking the foundation to fund that effort to, to improve that space. But it will all come to you. You'll all see it in the near future. And I'll ask for your consideration regarding approval at the next meeting.
Excellent. Tom, I know the next item on our agenda is usually personnel report.
You want to go to budget?
Yes, we have Riannon here for the budget vote. Thank you for being here. She has very limited time and wanted to try to at least get started. We have quorum, Riannon. For some reason, we are delayed and you can't gather the full vote, but thank you for trying. We'll do our best in the next 20 minutes. If you will bring your attention, everybody, to our committee reports and the budget committee. That is our first item under committee reports. Thank you. Tom, so we, you know, you Tom, so we, you know, you have seen some flurry over emails with, with our summary of our justification, our narrative, our understanding of why the budget is what it is this year. Last month, we talked about the process that we usually go through. We look at a flat budget. We look at, you know, several, you know, percentages, a variety of increases in an attempt to keep, you know, tax burden as low as possible while being as fair as possible to our taxpayers in terms of the services we provide, right? There's a little balance there. I'm gonna just share these kind of summary talk points that I shared with you all out loud for the public record. Our budget request this year is six million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. That's our total tax levy. That would be a six-point-five-six increase in the average homeowner's annual tax burden. And the number I love, everybody knows it, is what does that mean in real dollars? It's about a twenty-eight dollar increase from last year. Typically, that number is like thirteen, fourteen dollars, so this is more, and we're not trying to hide that. We're not trying to pretend. We have a very, about seventy-five percent of that increase, of the total increase request, is, is immovable. We have, we have no control over it. And I will quickly review what those things are. These are mandated increases in salaries that we're contractually obligated to fulfill. That is a, um, you know, year-to-year, we, we are faced with this. We also have a, I think something like a twelve percent, twelve-point-two percent increase in health insurance for our staff. We contribute a percentage. Staff contributes a percentage. It's going up. It's going up across the board. We had no provision for an increase last year, and this year, we, we're, you know, we can't defer it any longer. Same thing with PASNE. PASNE is the, what is the, what does that stand for?
Power Authority of the State of New York.
Thank you. Power Authority of the State of New York. We have had increases there, and also, we've been deferring budgeting for it year over year. That line item is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't review the amounts of increase, so I don't have the salary increase amount. It's, it's, it's unknown. We're still negotiating with our, with our union. We have, you know, we're, we're hoping. This, by the way, does six and a half, six-point-five-six percent increase is based on a two percent increase, okay? Just to be very clear. So anything above that is gonna push us into the high sixes, the sevens, the eights. We don't know what that number is gonna be. And we're doing our best to, you know, make sure that whatever budget we put forth will be accepted by the public. We're already way, you know, above what we normally ask, but again, a lot of this is knowingly immovable. We, we know that we, you know, we're gonna have to do something. The exact number is, is currently unknown. So this is obviously our, our, our best guess. We have contracted services. That is forty-eight thousand, five, forty-eight thousand and fifty-six dollars. This is primarily due to the minimum wage increase for our security guards. We want to keep them. We haven't raised any rates in the last two years, and we didn't previously budget for this because we were trying to stay within the tax cap. Last year, I don't think we, I don't know that we've been staying in the tax cap last year, but we were, what we were trying, and that was one of the ways that we tried, was to not give them an increase. So can't keep doing that, obviously. So that's seventy-five percent of our increases. Can't do anything about those. Of the twenty-five percent, what is, what that is comprised of is two components. One of them is a new full-time position, a librarian one, which is a school-age outreach coordinator. This was a position that we've been talking about, I believe, for at least a year, possibly more. It's been identified by staff as something that is very needed. It's, the programming for school-age kids was part of our identified objectives within our strategic plan. It's, you know, it's like, you know, we're, we're victims of our own success in a way. Those, those programs are very popular, and as a result, we need additional staffing. That full package is eighty-five thousand dollars. That includes salary and all benefits. And then, of course, library materials. We need to, you know, provide the materials and the equipment and the services that the taxpayer deserves, is what they're paying for. And we need to stay up to speed with the, the best we can, the, the most cutting-edge, the, you know, the most up-to-date. We were asked for an amount that was close to forty thousand dollars, and I was just telling you that it kind of breaks my heart to cut this at all. Oftentimes, we'll just keep that flat. But I don't, I, none of us felt that it was fair to do that. The ask is about half, a little less than half. It's eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, so that's it. Those two components are the things that we have control over, really hoping that we won't have to slash them. You know, again, we don't have a flat option, and if we were to try, we would have to cut programs. We'd have to cut things. We, we have to meet our expenses, obviously. So I'm gonna stop here and see if people have questions, if people have thoughts, comments. No thoughts or comments or questions?
It would be helpful just to a library, in case anybody is going to watch this video, on what the new librarian position will entail?
Sure. I can't specifically answer that, unless there's a description, but.
There is a description. I don't know if I, I might have it with me.
Let's see if you have that.
I, I, I can say that it will be a full-time librarian one position that will be located in the children's department.
We have, sorry, we have Bobby's, um, identification on the table.
Which is, which is what I'm looking for, but if you've got it electronically.
I have a little summary that I included. They said, you know, these, this was a, like, a critical request. I'm gonna read what we sent out. It says, children's head, or our, you know, wonderful children's head librarian, Bobby Simic, sent us a document. That document basically outlines that the Westchester Library System recently published a document providing comparisons between the thirty-eight public libraries in the Westchester Library System. The New Rochelle Public Library's full-time equivalent staffing per capita, which means for every two thousand residents, is the second lowest. So our library is ranked thirty-seven out of thirty-eight on spending per capita. And that means that we're staffed very lightly, given our population size, given the size of our library, given the amount of time we're open, and given the population we serve, the numbers of people.
In square footage.
And first, and, and per, yes, that's, yeah, in the square footage and the long opening hours. And they feel that it's appropriate in the context of our staffing situation and to remain in alignment with the community's stated goals for our strategic plan. Do you want to know more about the job description? Is that what you're asking for? Like, what are they exactly doing?
Yes.
I, I do know that they'll be working public service, as all our children's librarians and our adult services librarians. They will have responsibilities that relate to ordering collection development material as well. They'll be conducting programs. Depending upon the background, it could be for preschool children. It could be for tweens. They will, their sort of major off-desk responsibility, given all those other duties, will really relate to being the coordinator that will be working with the school district in regards to bringing in classes. And we've had great success this year with almost all of the kindergarten classes in the New Rochelle School District. And we have that, but we aren't satisfied. We want to build on that, and we want more class visits, and we want more programs that, that work with both our school district and ourselves. So we're really looking for richer collaboration, and we don't have a staff member to manage that. And we envision that this position will be focused on that goal.
Great. I have more specifics if anyone wants to know.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not concerned about the staffing. I just, I really do think that at this time, especially after COVID, across the board, educationally and social-emotional learning, we're playing catch-up. I, I do feel that this position is, is of need, especially looking at the social-emotional learning and aspects across all of our young people. One of the questions that I do have is about our contracted services. Again, it's to affect our procurement process, and I'm always hitting on it. Unless we have a long contract, you know, for three years, four years, five years, have we looked at, again, our security staff is amazing here now, but again, we always have to look at our, our budget, our expenses, and what is out there as far as services? Have we looked at putting a kind of, you know, RFP or some kind of a, for security services?
Yeah.
Are we locked in?
We're not locked in.
You know, so I, I, I say that as to exploiting our options, because I believe that is an area where we could probably look at, even though our security personnel here is, is, is great. And again, I justify the expense and, and the onboarding of a new person for our community to provide some services.
I think it's a valid point, Daniel, and we work with SSC. That was the vendor that we decided to move towards when we decided to discontinue the process of hiring our own security guards. It was really not successful. And SSC was the company most recommended by the Westchester Library System libraries and my peer directors, because they felt that they had typically provided a professional group of, of officers. They were responsible. SSC was always willing to work with us. And to be honest with you, you know, our, our, the quality of our guards have improved over years, but it really relates to the salaries that we're able to pay, you know, because it's now become an even more competitive marketplace because unemployment is down. It's, uh, security guard firms have, have to really attract good guards by providing good wages. So we really haven't done so, and, I mean, we, we could do so, but I, but I have to say, if you were to ask the staff, we have the best group of guards that we've ever had. Our building is not a quiet building. There are incidents that relate to misbehavior from the public. And we have a group of, of men and women who really know how to handle it.
Yeah, no, and, and I totally agree with you, and the cost of inflation, and cost of living is going up. I just really hope that the vendor that we are using is truly being transparent, and that we see the fruits of our investment go to the guards that are protecting and providing that service here. That it's just not a one-off, and like, they're still in the same range, and, you know.
No.
Yes, businesses are here to make money, but I, I, the justification of, you know.
The overhead.
Right, no, of course, of course, and I, I get that feeling. But I, I hope, I hope that the personnel here and the security staff do get, see the fruits of it.
Well, the idea is when there are.
I know, we can't control that.
No, no, but, but, but we can, Daniel. We can have the conversation with them, and it's a good point. You know, when we look towards raising our payment to our security posts, it's with the absolute expectation and promise that the wages of our men and women will go up, because otherwise, it, it would be self-defeating.
Right.
You know, these, these men and women could go elsewhere. But I, but having said that, there is, there is a portion of that wage that we pay that they take. It is, I cannot deny that. But we absolutely, we absolutely expect, and we have a promise, that if these wages go through, their salaries will increase, and we'll stay competitive because they haven't had a raise in two years, and, and the whole marketplace has changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? I mean, I just want to echo something Daniel said that, that stuck with me, is that, yes, we are, we are totally playing catch-up post-COVID with our kids, with, with ourselves. But I think nothing has shown the value and the benefit of libraries like the pandemic and the value that we provided with just keeping people kind of sane with our, you know, to-go bags for kids and everything, you know, that we tried to do curbside. We tried to open as quickly as possible. We, you know, we're constantly looking at our policies to make it as, you know, accessible. And, you know, I'm so happy to be serving in this role at a time when there's love letters to libraries being published and people really acknowledging that this is a beloved institution. And so, while it's hard to, you know, go out to the community and ask for, you know, a number, an increase that we typically haven't done in the past, I think this is, this is the highest I've ever seen. I, I think it's justified in some, just by virtue of the fact that we are, you know, we as a library and libraries in general are so, so vital. So with that, anything else? Any other comments, thoughts? You know, you, you here, all of us here, we are all envoys to go out into the community now, and it's important that you all feel good about this, and can understand it, and can share, and justify, because we are, you know, we're, this is our job, and this is the most important part of the year. This is our job. And I really want to thank Cory and Rhiannon, and Tom, Jean, Jessica, everybody who worked. Elizabeth, of course, sorry, Elizabeth. Yes, Elizabeth! And everyone who worked really hard to make this budget. Bobby Simic, too. Everyone who contributed, helped us craft the narrative, helped us understand what each piece means. And, and I think it, you know, I think it resonates with people. When I'm paying my tax dollars, this is what it goes to support, and breaking it down like that was incredibly helpful. And Elizabeth, in particular, gave me like, really good, general, like, you know, punches to the gut in the best way possible about why this matters. So thank you, everybody, for, for your work, and thanks for your feedback and questions. And with that, I will ask for, I will be on Rhiannon for two more minutes. You see her face?
Which, which one? The six-point-five-six or the six-point-eight-seven?
I mean, this can't be up to me. What are we asking for here? Look, we have two, we have, we explored two main options, right? We had an option that was a two percent salary increase for next year. And we have an option that is a two-and-a-half percent salary increase for next year. So there is a seventeen thousand dollar difference between the two. Again, we have not completed our negotiations. We're, in fact, just getting started.
Just getting started, yeah.
So how does this, how does this really work, Tom? What do you usually do?
Usually, the committee has a recommended.
You just pick one and vote on it?
And then it flies or it doesn't, and it doesn't make sense.
Right? I don't think we have material today. No, I, I was expecting.
That's all.
So that twenty-eight dollars that you were mentioning, is that based on the six-five-six or the sixteen?
That's a good question, but I think.
The twenty-eight dollars?
I think.
That's the six-five-six?
Yeah.
The, the twenty-eight dollar increase from last year is based on the six-point-five-six percent.
Remember, we talked about this? It was like a thirty-one dollars versus twenty-eight dollars, or was it twenty-six and twenty?
I think it was twenty-six and twenty.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think twenty-eight was based on the higher one.
The higher one. That's how I remember it, too.
Yeah, there was a twenty-six dollar something increase for the six.
Okay, because I'm reading it right here from your summary.
What's it say?
New York, New Rochelle Public Library budget request, six million, six-point-four-eight million, blah, blah, blah. A six-point-five-six percent increase in the average homeowner's annual tax burden or a twenty-eight dollar increase for one.
Six-six.
So is that, is that a typical?
I think that probably what I, what I didn't do is identify each increase of dollar amount per the, either six-point-five-six or the, because I don't, yeah, or the six-point-eight-seven increase. Yeah. So we would just have to figure out, like, when we're going out and, and speaking to the public if it's different from the twenty-eight, but I think the twenty-eight was actually associated with the six, yeah, the two-point-five percent.
Six-point-eight-seven?
Yes.
That's all we're going on, right? The six-point-eight-seven?
Well, it's a question. That's the question.
That's the question.
Would we not be able to cover potentially a two-point-five percent of the dollar increase if we could come up with that?
Yeah, we potentially would, yes.
So I think we need to.
I mean, we go for the higher, because we don't want to fall short on. Right, and we're negotiating. Yeah.
We will have to act with a fact, so.
Yes.
So I think we need to go.
And if the budget doesn't pass, then I think we go back to.
If the budget doesn't pass as a result of it being too high, yes, then we have to go back and lower the, the, we have to lower a whole bunch of stuff.
But it is a timer.
Right, right. Yeah, we're talking about, I think it's a $26 increase versus a $28 increase, I think, according to our conversation. Okay, so we are voting now on the, on the 2.5% increase, that is a 6.7% increase from last year. It's
6.87.
Sorry, 6.87, what did I say? 6.87, and that would be associated with a $28 increase from last year.
Bless you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'm proposing that Okay, so we will, we will, what we'll do is we'll get clarification to make sure that that number, that $28, because that's our number we take out into the public along with these other talk points, we'll get these talk points over later. And with that in mind, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a motion to, to pass the budget of 6.87% increase in the total amount. See, now I don't think I have the total amount here, it's summary, right? I don't think I have the
The total is 6.87?
Yes, I have it, yes. I have the 6.57, yeah. So this was a 6.5?
6.87.
If there are 10, that's the 6.5.
So the total budget
Yes.
6.5.
I see, that's the difference, okay. Okay, so, so the total budget increase, the total budget request this year is 6,000,650,404 and 39 cents.
For the 6.8?
For the 6.87 increase.
It's 6 million, say it again?
6,650,404 and 39 cents.
Right.
Okay, that doesn't exactly correspond with the tax levy, because the tax levy, because there's additional money that we raise in grants and other avenues internally and otherwise. So this is, the tax levy is a different number, 6,500,404. It's a difference of about $150,000, okay? That's the difference. But the total budget request is, is it, is it this tax levy amount or is it the total?
That's our budget.
Okay, our budget is 6,000,650,404 and 39 cents.
So we would need to revise the budget narrative?
Correct, but that's, that's, that's an internal process that we will revise for everybody to go out and understand and can ask questions and clarify. But for right now, at this meeting, right now, we need to, does everyone understand? Like, we have, we have, we received the right numbers, I just didn't, I just didn't do the, I just didn't match up the increase number with the correct request or the percentage number with the correct request. We didn't, we never, we didn't decide on, you know, which one we were pushing for at the time. Does everyone feel comfortable voting? Right, yes? Okay, good, all right. So then I am making a motion, I would like to make a motion to approve the budget request of 6,650,000, 650,404 and 39 cents, which represents a 6.87% increase. Can I get a second?
No second.
Who is the second?
Cory.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining, extensions? Okay, thank you, thank you, everybody. Thanks for your feedbacks. And I don't know why I used to gaggle. Strike that from the record. And thank you, and thank you, Rhiannon, for being here first. Appreciate it. Okay, back to our regularly scheduled program. The personnel report, Tom?
Yep, I just have one item for the board's consideration, I'll need a resolution. As you folks know, at the last meeting, I announced that we very happily had hired a new social media and video coordinator, full-time position. The young man's name is Geraldo Rodriguez, his annual start salary is $58,707. His start date is, was February 16th, 2023. And he's here tonight and he's filming us, and thank you. We're dealing with an atypical situation.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Trial by fire. Excellent, good, so we need a motion to pass, right? Does anyone else want to make a motion tonight? No?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Seal's making a motion. To hire Geraldo Rodriguez?
Yes.
At the annual salary that Tom so stated. Great, can we get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Good, welcome, Geraldo, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
For official.
I just have one other board request. I've forgotten that at the foundation board of last Monday, they brought on a new board member, the gentleman's name is Doug Gould, he's a New Rochelle resident. He is the owner of a, of a communications firm called DG-CO. It's been in existence since 1990. Since that time, he's had over 250 clients, public interest groups, nonprofits, et cetera. Notable among them was the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. When we lost our vote regarding governance, Doug Gould was hired to, he and his firm, to help educate the residents why we should become a school district library. It was successful. And so Mr. Gould is sort of circling back into our world. He brings a lot of skills, contacts, creativity, and so the tradition is that the library board has to vote to accept Mr. Gould on the foundation board.
Oh, on the foundation board?
On the foundation board, not our board.
Did you circulate his information via?
I can say that it was Doug Gould's firm that also worked on the Huguenot Children's Library.
Right.
Like, the Huguenot Children's Library was starting, and one of my former colleagues in a different comms firm was working with Doug Gould's firm and actually led that. And it was a really successful campaign to bring attention to the need for it and the importance of providing us with that.
So you can vouch for other?
I can vouch, yes, and have been trying to get him to do some work for other organizations. So I do think that he has a commitment to New Rochelle and to the library.
Excellent, that's great. I would love to see more.
I'll send you more.
So please, yeah, I'd love to, but I don't think that will preclude us from voting to approve, unless anyone has any objections about that. Can I make a motion to approve Doug Gould's schools as a new board member for the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation? Can I get a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Right.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Great, welcome, Doug Gould. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Great, that brings us to our assistant director's report, and Elizabeth?
Thank you. I'd like to take a minute to recognize Denise Link, all of our efforts and outreach and the work that she does at BEATalk, because I've got to work with her very closely on a new initiative that we're working on, and I'm just very impressed to see her level of commitment and dedication to members of this community. So wanted to say that. In other news, this February, we realized that the programming attendance that we had in December, for the December vacation, we really matched the February winter break. So this was not like an anomaly, this is actually a trend that we are, we are starting to see. A lot of our programs, starting from the early morning, draws around the youth, the people. So it's, it's a very busy, active space, and I think that that really attests to why we need a new colleague in that department, because that colleague is going to be helping with all the wonderful programs that they do, but also do outreach, not just with the schools, but also with other community organizations, and also represent the library in different outreach events, because right now we're a little bit short, and so we're trying to reach decisions on where we can send people. So I think this new person is really going to help reach more people and more children and get to do more programs. The teens are also a wonderful space, they attended a variety of different programs, everything from like trivia to the arts and crafts. Rio was, had taken a tour, actually taken a colleague from the Mount Vernon Public Library, a tour of our space, and told her about her programs. And so the New Rochelle Public Library's teen space is really kind of a, I would say a bulk standard for teen services. So that's, that's been great to hear. The adult department, because of all the renovation on the third floor, has been doing a great job maintaining their collection, which means sort of getting rid of some old books and working on that. We also were interested to learn that in terms of all the Spanish language books that are being checked out, the two most popular topics include cookbooks and parenting teachers, I mean, sorry, teenagers. Yeah, parenting teachers as well, but parenting teenagers along with that. So that's, that's been interesting. Larry, our local history librarian, is helping a researcher who is looking for information about the New Rochelle friendship train. I don't know if that was developed with anybody, but
Say that again?
The friendship train. Now, so I guess when Larry's done, the, his research, I'll share. I'll, I'll share his, his research review. We're also going to be doing an event in April highlighting and giving local authors a space to talk about their books and sell their books. So Larry's actually working on compiling a list of all kinds of local authors, self-published and published. I'm happy to report the strategic plan from the team has begun. All the teams have met. We have talked about, in various teams, we've talked about like what we currently have, the audits in terms of our technology and our equipment. We are now thinking about different ideas in terms of partnerships and I, I believe that what we are now thinking about is using a red light, green light tracking dashboard, which is really a great way to visually show progress in the different areas that we are doing. So that is, that's really wonderful. And it's, it's really interesting, because there is a real mind shift when I talk to like the staff members, everything that they do is really thought about, and there's a lot of focus on how it fits in strategic plan. So it's not, you know, let me just sort of do this randomly, how does this, what does this all mean? How do we place it in the strategic plan? So that's been great. And last but not least, our circulation supervisor reports that 46% of the New Rochelle residents are library current members. So that is a pretty phenomenal statistic, and I think that, you know, with each year we're looking to grow that even a little bit more.
Excellent. I love, I love how you frame that, Elizabeth, and that's exactly right. The strategic plan document is meant to be a guidepost and a guiding document, and I can, you know, I think that it's easy to go about your day and your work as, as you happen without kind of regard, it's like maybe in parallel with you, but not making these touchpoints. And it sounds like you've created a structure where there are lots and lots of touchpoints so that you can always refer back to it. And, you know, going forward, where it's not working or where there's modifications that need to be made for the guiding document itself, you'll know, because you'll, you'll see what's working, what's not, where we are seeing, you know, great strengths, or where we're seeing things just actually don't match up with what we thought they would. And it's, you know, it will inform and I think really help us continue to shine moving forward.
Right, and one of the other great things about this whole thing is that we're doing a lot of cross-collaborative work, so people are not just working in silos, and everyone gets to hear what someone else is doing, and their ideas are being shared, and not just within the goals themselves, but also like with all the other teams. So there's a real kind of sharing of ideas and sharing contacts and all of that, so it's been, it's been great.
Love it, that's great, and that'll just make us stronger, all of that collaboration. Thank you, thanks, Tom, thanks, Elizabeth, and Denise.
Yes, yes.
Give love to Denise, we know she's wonderful, but it's nice to hear it. And, and yeah, I mean, any other staff you want to highlight, I think it's always
We'll, we'll do at least one staff member every month.
Love it, I love that, thank you, yep. And that just, you know, one person shines, everybody shines. Excellent, great, thank you so much. That brings us to committee reports. We, we already had our slightly chaotic budget vote, we will clean up the narrative for you, I apologize for that. And we'll, we'll get our ducks in a row. And I think this is the season, just FYI, where we used to be, pre-pandemic, invited to speak at neighborhood association meetings every year, sometimes with BOE candidates and library trustee candidates, sometimes just on our own. And, and we also talk about the budget, and we're on tour basically, right, for the next two months until the budget vote, which is May 16th.
16th.
This year, we go around and talk up the budget and, you know, help people understand why we're asking for what we're asking for. I, we will, we will hear from Tom if there are things, you know, events to attend. I please encourage everybody here to attend as many events as possible, as you can, and each one should at least have, you know, two of us if possible. I usually go to almost all of them, so I can count as one. But this is, you know, this is where we need to make sure that we can be as present as possible in supporting the library.
If I could just interject quickly, traditionally what we do is we reach out to neighborhood associations and other civic groups, and we just have gotten a new list from City Hall, we'll send it out, or hopefully we'll have letters available maybe later next week. And anybody that would like to come in and put a little note on a letter that might be going to your neighborhood association, Lynn Woodlake, or another one, or please feel free to do so. And I also encourage, through your networks, through your friendships, talk about the library, and if there is a meeting, please see if you can garner an invitation for us, because we are really looking to connect. And since the pandemic, things have really, really narrowed in terms of our breadth of appearances, and there's a few neighborhood associations like the Lynn Woodlake that are really on target, a few of us like Residence Park, et cetera, but many are, are not as active, and if you have a relationship, please explore it and wrangle an invitation for us.
Is there also a goal, I would assume, that there's a goal to ensure that we hit at least, at least one group in every city council district, is that?
We try to.
Do we, do we, do we actually map it out and plan it to say we're trying to?
I don't think this story, we haven't ever seen that, but that's a great idea. And I think it helps to plant seeds in every district, like you're saying, and help people understand, because I think the more people really understand what we're asking and how it's difficult but necessary, you're right, it's
Maybe working with our city councilors, you know, if they have a meeting in their district, if we can get an invitation. In years past, we've had some success with PTAs as well, it's an amazing group to connect with, civic organizations too. But it, really, we really have seen far fewer than when I started. When I started, there was easily 20, 20 over two months.
It was a busy season before the pandemic, I was like every few nights out, you know, and I, you know.
And sometimes multiple.
Yeah, and we've been fortunate that we've, we've never, we've never lost a vote so far, but so, but I do think that it helps to get in front of people.
And this year might be a challenge.
Well, can we put out an email, maybe just a basic email, because
The mail?
For example, I'm the president, you send.
Yeah.
But let's say we don't have anything, we're not going to have anything, I mean, we can have it in a long time.
Or something you could share in other networks.
But I have everyone's emails, so I can
Could you email blast?
And how, you know, specifically, we talk about like price for, you know, assessment?
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We have the mailer that we, we send out to every household, and we're starting to work on that too as well. But maybe something even more brief, yeah?
Yeah, so maybe I can, I'll send out the summary that needs something up just for us internally, so you have, we all have more detail. And then Beth, I love your eyes on something that I can craft that can like condense and see that, yep, I understand it, I can share this and people understand it, right? But, okay, thank you, that's, that's a great tip. And, and we, all of us can do the same thing to our networks too. And I think a email format is great, and it should kind of follow what the mailer is, like, it should just, they should all kind of go together so that there's not disparate information or anything. But thank you, thanks for your feedback, everybody. Billings and grounds?
No report, hopefully next month.
Okay, right now, or next month? Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Community relations.
I have Rhiannon's brief report, so I'll do it for her.
Thank you.
So some updates of what happened, February and March, programs and events, art workshops, February Valentine's pop Art workshops, February Valentine's pop-up workshop. We had a March folk art workshop and a mini workshop. Films, NRPL film series, six attendees. Nourishel plays Hollywood Body and Soul, twenty attendees. NRPL film series continuing March fourteenth. Zomto Club Film Series, a part of Women's History, film by women from women making movies. First film, Wonder Woman. We had seven attendees. Children in theater, young musicians of Westchester Conspire, third graders from Columbus School, February thirteenth. We had a hundred and thirty attendees. Yeah, that's great. Wakandai Performance, February twenty-fifth, a hundred and ten attendees. Yoga, yoga and meditative arts that happened on the twenty-third of February, March seven, twenty, and March twenty-first, average of fourteen attendees per session. Continued chair yoga, Mondays and Wednesdays. We have an average of fifteen plus attendees per session. Lecture presentation, concerts, et cetera. As Tom stated, the mini golf at the library, March eleventh, five hundred plus attendees. Again, that's always amazing. Marketing communication, community relations, sorry. Marketing support, managed promotion of thirty NRPL programs in March, including print and digital and press. ARP Tax Aid Program, February stats, our numbers are way up from last year. During the month of February, we filed two hundred and twenty-five returns. This year compared to sixty last year. So, that's huge. However, however, compared to twenty nineteen, as Tom stated, years we operated full taxes without COVID, we had two hundred and twenty-five plus files to three hundred and twenty-five completed returns. So, I mean, but we're getting there. We're getting there. Snow delays, et cetera, et cetera. You know, that all happens here. Community relations, community relationship building. Conversations and our, and our bid continues to identify and coordination of programs and collaboration, especially during April vacation week. Committee members, Joe Andrews regarding HBCU College Fair here at the library on November fourth. We met with Commissioner Development, Adam Salgado, to discuss opportunities to partner in the Ruby D Park inside and outside the library, May and October. Discussion is continuing. Member of the Earth Day Citywide Planning Committee, sustainable events taking place in Amherst Plaza, April twenty-second. Want to come on that. And finalizing dates on Healthy Yard Nourishel, beginning with a virtual program on pesticides. And you continue on with lottery nights every third Thursday of the month. Next session is three sixteen at six P M. And obviously, check out everything that's happening at the BTOP Help and Learning Center from GED, Civics, ESL, outreach, job search, English conversations, and more.
Excellent. Thank you. Finance committee?
Nothing.
Personnel committee?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Policy committee?
Well, I think there's a policy here.
Welcome to the meeting.
I wasn't here the next month. I'm sorry.
And this is a doozy too.
You're not going to make me read this whole time.
Only the first three pages.
Seventeen pages. No, absolutely not. But why don't you, can you describe what it is? Do you want to, yeah?
How about I can do the introduction and the mission?
This is great. And what is the title?
The title is the Collection Development and Maintenance Policy.
Good.
The purpose of this collection development policy is to guide the selection of library materials and inform the public about the principles upon which selections are made. The Library Bill of Rights, as adopted by the American Library Association, and the Freedom to Read Statement issued jointly by the American Library Association and the Association of American Publishers, included in the appendix. Underpin the policy. The mission of the Nourishel Public Library, it's a community resource that seeks to improve the life of every citizen in our city. It is dedicated to encouraging learning in all stages of life, to protecting intellectual freedom, and to providing fair and equal access to information. Our strategic plan two thousand twenty-one through, two thousand twenty-six provides a roadmap for strengthening our resources to ensure the vitality of the Nourishel Public Library.
Excellent. Good. So, so this, right, according to this introduction, is a policy around how the, how the collection is. You want to read that?
The collection.
Yep. Yeah. Go ahead. Excellent. Yeah.
Nourishel Public Library selects, acquires, and provides free and open access to appropriate materials regardless of format. The responsibility for the collection rests with Nourishel Public Library's executive leadership. The responsibility for selecting and retaining materials is delegated to qualified and knowledgeable staff who employ the criteria outlined in this policy. Nourishel Public Library makes every attempt to purchase titles which are popular, in demand and requested by our patrons. However, there are instances where the library cannot due to budget restrictions, esoteric nature of the book, or lack of wide appeal. In the event the book is not in our collection, we strive to retrieve it from another library. Let me read the list here. Usage statistics are continuously monitored and used to evaluate if materials should be, oh, wait.
That's right. Materials should be deaccessed.
De, sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
See that word?
Deacquisition.
Yeah. Deaccession.
Deaccession.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. I never saw that word in my life.
I know. It's a big one.
Condition of materials is also a factor in deselection and replacement. I'll be honest. Their deacquisition of materials is scheduled on an ongoing basis. Professional library staff deselect items based on relevance, condition, and timeliness. Core unpopular materials are replaced with newer additions.
Is deaccession and deacquisition the same thing?
Essentially, yeah.
Great. That's great. So, this, I don't think I've ever seen a policy like this here. All of these, all of our policies are available on our website under policies, library policies. So, this is one of many, many, many that we have approved and reviewed and developed over the years. And that's where this will go to once approved, right?
Right.
Yep. So, you know, this, this, to my, you know, I'm a policy person. I read through it and my understanding is it basically shares information on our collections. It shares information on how, you know, we acquire and how we, what's the word? Deaccession. Deaccession materials. And that's based on, you know, raggediness, I'm sure. And unpopularity and.
Or if a, or if a nonfiction title is outdated, you know, especially in children's. Because if it's thirty years old, twenty years old, you know, the information is no longer valid.
Got it. Good. Yeah.
What do we do? Just, I know it has probably to do with the policy, but what do we do with these old books?
Good question. What we, what we try to do with a few things. We will oftentimes offer the friends, look at them, and sometimes they will sell them. It's great. Money comes back to the library. The other program that we do, and it's been really successful, is we work with a vendor who will come to the library and remove all of the books that we have decided that we don't want to keep or the books that the friends get as donations that are in great shape or not, you know, of interest to the community. And they recycle. They pull them apart and they, and they recycle them. And if you go into the, well, not, you can't go now, but the garage is full of our dumpster with our carpet. But there's usually a huge box, a Gaylord box, where if you look, you'll see all these books that have been deaccessed. The vendor will show up, remove them, and then leave an empty cart. And so, we're trying not to fill landfills.
And we document like, we took this one out and it gets like saved in your system or whatever. I would love, I mean, don't hate me. Please don't hate me for asking this. But it would be very interesting to know like how many physical items we bring in and how many.
Oh, yeah. We could certainly get like that.
I knew you said that. Yeah.
Yeah, that's an easy.
It would be really interesting because that's like breathing, right? It's like the breath of the library. Yeah, you're getting, you're bringing in and bringing, yeah, it's like the tide and the exchange. And I think that it kind of paints a picture of vitality, right? We're just constantly trying to stay on top of.
And that's a big issue. And Elizabeth reported on it in her, in her assistant director's report. Is that we have this large library with a lot of space and we add material on a regular basis. But there are things that stay here longer than they should for all the reasons that we talked about. It's hard for staff, but we're trying to get into the mode of continually looking at the collection. Because if you have a big collection and you have great new things, but they can be obscured by the older things, then, you know, statistics have shown that a lean collection with newer pertinent items move more. It's an higher circulation.
Yeah. And I think we'll also look at like, still talking to different departments about what other ways that we could like reuse and repurpose these books.
Yeah.
Because there's book art, as you know.
Pinterest. I'm sure. Has tons of it.
Yes, exactly. Right. The book labs, great stuff. But yeah, so there's a lot of like meager things as possible.
So cool. Very, very cool.
But it also keeps the library young. So, a lot of people don't get enough for the library in an up-to-date, modern place, right? It's like, oh, people already go to libraries. Say, hey, a lot of our material is up-to-date. We did have an attrition. We cleared all the materials out and we're having more relevant new material.
Right. Yes.
And you could do book labs.
Yes, you have to do book labs. Yes.
It would be, I just had this funny thought about Marie Kondo and like sparking joy and like thanking the books for their service and give a little thank you party, you know, once in a while. Little thank you books and thank you.
It'd be a trustee institute.
I know.
You did see that she posted it. She was like, oh.
Yeah, she was.
With that process. Just saying. After she had kids, she was like, I'm not holding shirts like that.
That's right. That's right. My friend was like, I got rid of that book because it didn't spark joy. There. Good. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. Thanks. So, I think the question, yes, the question next.
Make a motion.
Yes. Does anyone have any other questions about this document? I think we all.
I personally find it fascinating. I'm going to read it.
Yeah.
Yes. And it won't make you asleep, Francis. I promise.
If you're going to do what?
It won't make you asleep.
I don't need to sleep anymore.
So, then don't read this.
Okay. But I have a big list to the attention of the board.
It's a wonderful document. Yeah, it really is.
I wonder how it compares with the policies at other.
Yes, which is, it's, the thing is, I have researched all kinds of libraries, big and small, east and west, and north and south. And looked at the big, like the big libraries and the small ones and looked at various parts of their, their policy to like.
And the thing that I was, that I care about, and look, this is a living document, right? We're gonna, we're gonna, this is a.
It needs to be, right.
It does. And I think, and.
It's very good.
It is excellent. And one of the things I wanted to just point out as far as it being a living document is that it also cross-references other policies pertaining to donations and other types of things. And as long as there is consistency between policies and that, you know, they talk to each other in a way. They have to. And if we, if we find some new and great thing to add to this, we should.
Right. Yes, right. Yes, right. Which is why like this is going to live primarily on the web because it links to other forms. I mean, for example, it links to like the deed of gift form, which is a form that people fill out when they donate something to the archives. So, instead of like having that, you know, live elsewhere, it's right there. So, people click on that link.
And other forums mention it.
And other forums, yeah.
Yeah. I like that it mentioned the whole digital divide and digital equity too. So, it's pretty.
It's really comprehensive.
And it also, and I think it's worth mentioning that it also has the request for reconsideration, which is an important issue. It's one that we haven't had to face. And what that means in real language, not library language, is if a patron finds something objectionable in our collection, it could be a book, it could be a video, there's a process that they can follow. And I think that's really important. We have been lucky here in Nourishel. We haven't had that, but throughout the country, there are more and more instances where books and other non-print material are being questioned and being pulled. And we have a process that allows for thoughtful staff consideration, but ultimately for board consideration. Hopefully, we won't have to use it, but it's there if we, if we need it.
Thanks to Elizabeth and Tom and staff and everybody for working on this. Does anyone want to make a motion? I can make a motion.
We'll make a motion to pass this very comprehensive collection development and meeting policy.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No? Any extensions? No? Great. We have a new policy. Thank you. Thank you again. Good.
Just one brief, we, in the aftermath of the event that happened in the library some months ago in the theater regarding NOI, we are looking at a room rental policy. And it's been a team including Lisa Itskowitz, Toby Sevish, Ed Roddy, Elizabeth, and myself. And we are making progress. We probably at some point in the near future will do a final review of what we think might be appropriate. We then will probably bring it to the attention of our attorney because there's, we want to make certain that what we are hoping to do is legal. And then the board will have an opportunity to also spend time looking at it and deciding. It's an important topic and we can see it's becoming more and more important as we go forward with this, in this post-pandemic world. So, stay tuned for that.
Thank you. And that, in addition to that, and the naming policy. Yeah. So, those two things will be coming up.
What was the second thing you just said?
It's the naming policy, meaning like if someone wants to name this pillar, that axella pillar, like what's the process?
Yeah, five thousand dollars.
A new pillar.
Right.
Anything else to do with food, you can name it after me. Vending machine.
Okay, fine. Nice of you.
One of our most popular collections.
Good. Okay. Special projects committee?
We have nothing to report. However, I am glad to hear that Elizabeth and staff are really taking the lead as far as the strategic plan. So, I think some next steps for our committee is have a conversation, include you, Elizabeth, that's to get some feedback on what we're doing internally. And then next steps, what we can do externally. And then, and then also loop in community relations or community department to see what we're doing with our strategic plan as well.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. We have no public. It's just us chickens here. So, anything else? Any comments? No? Good. Good. Then I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting for tonight. Make it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Good. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Cory. Have a good, good weekend.
Good, Cory. Aye.